Let's all stand and play.
I.
The allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We all.
Hello.
Yeah, we are having intermittent internet issues, so we are doing our best to keep it going.
I am pleased with that.
No problem, talk aloud. Take a roll call, please.
Trustee Gator.
Here.
Trustee Jerome. Trustee Kenny.
Present.
Trustee McDonald.
Here.
Trustee Whitehouse.
Here.
Mayor Lieutenant Newton.
Here.
Mayor Hammond.
Here. Members of the agenda we need to know of tonight, anyone? No, okay. Conflicts of interest want to bring up? Okay. We're gonna move on to the first part of this meeting. This is the community's public comment. So if individuals want to come up and talk about things that are not related to our agenda tonight, come on up to the podium and speak your name and address, and we'll give you three minutes, and we'd like to hear about it. So, what's up?
Christine Gator, Downtown Core. I want to speak about public comment for the land use code. There's only one in-person public comment, March 22nd, if I have that date right. I would like to have more opportunity for in-person public comment for the land use code before you guys approve it. Some suggestions, some ideas would be the work session, maybe allowing public comment. Or you can do first and second reading, like they do in other municipalities like Loveland and Fort Collins. So having the March 22nd being the first reading, collecting the public comment, making changes according to the public comment, and then having the second reading, your first meeting in April. Here are my sign codes, comments. Our sign code is more restrictive than Fort Collins, which is our neighbor city. And we like to be like them, so I don't understand why this proposed sign code is more restrictive than our neighbors. They allow unlimited number of yard signs and site signs. This proposed code wants to limit our yard signs and site signs to six, and then two at the street. Fort Collins allows up to thirty-two square feet of banner. Our current code in Wellington allows up to sixteen square feet. The proposed code wants to reduce it to six square feet, which is a yard sign. So no banners allowed. This is very restrictive, and I ask that you change it to be like Fort Collins. Unlimited number of signs allowed, and thirty-two square feet being the area of the sign. The other thing I want to address is on page 209, it's the chapter seven, 701.12e, "The Loss of Nonconforming Status Destruction." A, "If a nonconforming structure is destroyed by any means to the extent of more than fifty percent, it may not be reestablished." This is concerning, because everything in downtown might be nonconforming. I don't know what else would be nonconforming, but this is a big concern, that if you're grandfathered in and you lose fifty percent of your structure, you're not allowed to rebuild it. Please take that away. Thank you.
We have someone who has their speaker on using the Zoom, so that is, can everybody check their connections, their phones? If they've got their speaker on through the Zoom, then we are, it's causing a lot of feedback.
Phones, computer devices, everything.
I've had staff check all of their computers. It's not them, so it's somebody here. Not that I'm pointing at anybody.
Well, how many computers we got on?
My speaker is muted.
Everybody's speakers are muted.
Oops, it stopped. Nope. Give us one second. Thank you.
Okay. Everything's muted.
Did anybody join the meeting in between the work session and regular meeting?
Because we weren't having this problem earlier.
Who? Who is, anybody zooming in here?
What's up? Yeah, that's actually going through this computer. I'm on a different computer.
I guess we'll just have to roll with it. I don't know how the recording is coming out with the feedback.
Let's go. Come up and approach the podium and talk about an agenda. You've got three minutes. Name and address, please.
Sherrell Teats, 4525 Ingalls Drive. I am also here to discuss some things with the land use code that's getting ready to be voted on in March. My worry is, is this draft plan was introduced to the Planning Commission on February 7th. So in looking at introduction of the full draft on February 7th, it may have been worked on through the summer, but it has not been worked on for three years. The comp plan may pair with the land use code, but there's so much more in the land use code than the comp plan. So land use code is ordinances, and that's concerning to me, because as I'm going page by page in it, I'm on page 200 of a 320-page document, and that's not including the landscaping additions that were included. That is another 200 pages. So it's a lot to go through. I'd like to go through it page by page. I'd like to be educated. I have my same concerns that Downtown Core is going to see some issues if they do lose their property. I did send an email out to Cody Byrd finding out how you would go about adjusting this. If you need to apply to have your home rebuilt, you do have to apply, and it can be denied. That is huge, and I do not feel that we should be taking away people's residence. Yes, we have to learn to agree to pair with businesses down in the downtown area, but they're not going to get bullied out because they can't rebuild. And my concern is, is if someone wants to rebuild, they have to go through planning first. It should be going through, there should be a separate request to go through Board of Adjustments if you'd like to make a change. I don't think it should be going through building to start. If you're going to building and they're the ones that are writing these codes, you're going to be pretty uncomfortable contesting the building department saying, "I'd like variance." Some people won't. Sorry. My apologies. Right? So that is some of my concerns and huge things to take into account. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Crystal, is it my chance? Is it, did somebody unmute this TV?
I'm fine. I'm Rich Westphal. I sent you all a little note along about fireworks.
Yeah.
And my, my thing is fireworks that are personal and subdividends, and they're going to create, and they are creating a hazard. And what I'm worried about is there's going to be a real explosion, somebody's edifice is going to burn down, or somebody is going to be seriously injured. And I want to be sure that that doesn't happen as far as downtown, anyway. And then the other thing else that is, state law has a certain set of requirements. And I want to make sure that our requirements that we have for this town comply with all that. Because if we don't, there's going to be leftover drugs, some serious repercussions. Because my experience has been, no offense legal system, but they go for the most blood, and so when we're most money, it's going to be like, somebody sets off a couple of sisters' casters, bosses goes through somebody and die. So I was asking if we could have some kind of group or commission or some review these laws, and make sure we comply and upgrade our standard. I had a harder time understanding ours actually in town. But I can very well understand the state and state.
All right, all right.
I just.
Is it a good question?
Yeah.
Would fireworks fall or would some of the code and stuff that we're reviewing right now, would fireworks be a part of that potentially?
Absolutely. Fireworks are in the chapter 10, which is general offenses, and we'll review that at a moment. Let me kind of share, so it's actually has some specific requirement, or specific recommendations on how we can modify that to be more enforceable and clear. So that's something that'll be coming back more, but it's a major part of the code. That's good. It's all good.
We're hearing things like, like.
You sound pretty awesome.
So, so we can continue like?
So, yeah, so we can continue, we can continue like this, or we can shut it all down? No, shut it all down and start over. Okay, so those, those who are logged.
I have a, yeah. Something I noticed when you get a pretty large session going into your regular session, Chris, when you have pull over a screen, and it looks like it overlapped a different screen, you used that, so I didn't know if you had to use any of that. I was just wondering, I just saw.
No, we didn't open up a new Zoom meeting.
Okay.
It was.
It just had something overlap and I thought it was.
Yeah.
Let's start over.
I make sure we don't have to, we don't have to.
No.
Right, so everybody who's logged in now will need to log back in. We need to take about a three-minute recess. Okay? All right. We're logging in.
Will I be able to restart that scene, Julie?
I hope so. It should be. I mean, it hasn't expired, right?
Whoever walked in between.
Yeah, I know.
I'm just going to remove everybody?
Yeah.
And then leave it open?
Okay, see what happens?
Yeah. Okay, Darla Jenny Kim K. Those are all staff, so they should know how to do it.
The only thing that changed is we went into regular meeting. Nothing like Zoom changed, nothing changed in the work before.
Test, 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 test. Test. Is it gone?
Everybody do the wave.
Okay, folks, we're going to keep going. We're still in public comment, so if anyone else would like to come up and say something, we'll give you three minutes. Anyone else? Yep, please.
Karen Eifer, I live in the Knowles. So I had some questions. One of the things was, I'm sorry, I don't say name plate. What's your name?
Patty Garcia.
Patty, you were saying that the assessment for the water rates was going to be ready until fall, but I thought I'd heard you say before it was going to be ready in spring. What happened?
So we'll be doing the study starting this spring, and then the study.
Starts in the spring?
Yeah, the study starts and it gets completed like in August is when we're looking at that timeframe.
Okay. Thanks for that.
Of course.
And I wanted to point out that I know I've heard a few board members, and I've come to a few sessions when you guys are working, saying that we want to be able to, kind of like the mayor had just said, we want to be able to follow through with this land use code because we've all worked on it for so long. And in fact, Mayor Hammond, you just said, "I want to get it done, get it passed through, so the next board can make it all better." And I really, I can, that was a direct quote from you. I wrote it as you were speaking, and it's on the recording. So.
I can even, I can even expound on that too, if you like.
Well, let me finish what I'm saying first. I know that you all have worked on this for a long time, but that new board that's coming in has had no say on the land use code. And they're the people who are coming in that are going to have to enforce the land use code. And so I think if it takes a few months for that board, the trustees and the mayor that are coming in, to get up to speed on that land use code, and find out the information about that land use code, I think that that should be allowed in that time so that they have a say in the land use code that they're going to help in enforcing when you leave your office.
Right.
I think that the new board would be able to bring maybe some things that maybe you haven't thought of, maybe I haven't thought of, to those things, and they should have the opportunity to do that. And actually, something Ashley was saying was, we need to stop saying "push through," but that's all you guys have said the last. Because I have come, we want to push this through. Land use code is far more important to the residents of Wellington than to be pushed through in any way that is being currently presented. I think that the new trustees and the mayor should have a say in whatever the land use. This.
Okay.
Good point. Okay. So let me try to explain a little bit. Time that I've been sitting here, we've been. Uh, regional.
Sure.
And, and, and. I don't agree with it. Not everybody.
Right, nobody can agree with that. Thank you. Well, you said it to me. You said, "Where were you?"
Oh, okay, hang on. I just want to bring this back here for a second, because I think what you have to say is extremely valuable. But something that has piqued my interest is that you said you had some suggestions about what we could do to provide better engagement and better transparency for this process. Would it be okay if I were to reach out to you, or trustee Gator, or one of us, and meet with you about those things and bring them back to the board so that we can, I don't want to be rude or disruptive, but we do, we do have to move on and allow for other public comment.
I understand that. That's why I waited a while.
I absolutely want to acknowledge your concerns. They are valid. That has been an ongoing concern for as long as I have been coming to town trustee meetings is issues with transparency, issues navigating the website, and every.
I've been here for thirteen years, and it's been a mess the whole time.
I understand.
My husband's been here for twenty-five, and it's been a mess the whole time as well.
I understand.
And can I just touch back to Mr. Whitehouse? I'm not saying you personally, I'm saying collectively as a board. I'm not attacking you. Sorry if I made that the wrong way. Like I said, I've got anxiety, and it comes out weird sometimes. So, not attacking you personally.
Thank you, and I, I hope my tone was not too frustrating, because one of the things we're supposed to do is be respectful to each other and the public. And so if I came across incorrectly, I wish to apologize directly to you, anyone in this room and anybody who is zooming in as well, because that's not, we signed a code that we would behave a certain way, and, you know, maybe I could have done a better job, so.
No problem. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
And you know, we have, we have email addresses too, personally too, as well, you know. Zoom, send right one in to me.
Yeah, I like to be able to have that paper trail, but also to have accountability of coming to these meetings. This is recorded. Everybody in town can see it. So, I've also pushed by a trustee saying, "I would like to meet with you in person." And I won't do that, because then there's no accountability of what was said, what was her tone, what did she mean? I don't want any of that type of thing to happen. Either it's in black and white paper trail, or it's here recorded in public. But thank you.
Bet. Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Hi, everybody. Lisa Cholet, 7424 Homestretch Drive. Don't care about land use code today. I just wanted to mention, since I was listening on the work session, and I briefly spoke to a couple trustees during the break, but with the finance committee, it was my understanding and my experience on the roundtable is that it definitely needs to be residents only, no trustees. It can be very intimidating when you're trying to digest a fire hose of information if there's people in the room that know way more than you that you're supposed to be contributing to a conversation, if that makes sense. So as you set to form this finance committee, I would just ask that you keep that in mind, and that, that oversight and budget oversight, if it's residents only, they can speak freely about what they see in the budget. They can present questions to the finance director. They're really great about coming back with answers to the questions when they have them. But nobody feels like they have a dumb question. Nobody has to worry that they might be hurting a trustee's feelings, questioning a choice you guys made or something like that, and that makes it a productive process. When you have somebody in the room who made those decisions, then, you know, human nature, you know, you worry they're going to go and talk about something you said behind their, you know, behind your back, or, you know, they're afraid to ask it. It's just human nature. So if the playing field is level, the finance perspective. If it's not a level playing field, then it's just saying you're doing it to do it, and it won't do what you actually intend. So, just one person's opinion. Thanks, you guys.
Thank you.
Wyatt Schwaneman Curtis, downtown neighborhood. I just wanted to thank everyone, public mostly, for the forum yesterday. I thought it was a great forum. River Alive Church hosted it. The Gators put it on, so wanted to thank that, thank everyone for that. And I also wanted to mention that the next forum is on Wednesday, next Wednesday, here at the Leaper Center from six to eight. So if you feel like you weren't able to ask questions, then please come to that forum and ask questions to us then. So, appreciate it.
Quick question, sir.
Yeah.
Do you know, I've not heard back, there's going to be a mayoral forum and a trustee's forum, I believe they're separate. Do you know which one is?
From my understanding, they are not separate, but that would be a good question for the chamber, and I don't see anyone here from the chamber, so. But from my understanding, they, they were looking at doing it separate, and then I, I had, from just reading the flyer, it looks like it's, it's an actual altogether. Oh, it looks like someone can answer that, so.
Good evening. I am not with the chamber, however, I do know they are doing two separate sessions. They are both mayoral and trustee candidates combined. And they will be facilitating all of the questions, so they will have pre-written questions prior to those forums.
Meaning the second one will be on the 24th.
March 24th from six to eight PM.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll close the public meeting this time. Resume our normal business here. Action items, C1. Waste Water Treatment Plant Construction Manager at Risk and CMR Process Contract Amendment for Guaranteed Maximum Price, GMP. Mr. Dave Meyer, please.
Good evening. Any minute you get set up? I have a presentation. You have to give me permission to do that?
Only if you turn your microphones on.
Only if I what? Can you? There's no hear me?
Surrounds. Oh no, we got enough of that.
Okay, slideshow started. So Dave Meyer, town staff engineer, we are here tonight before you to present finally the guaranteed maximum price for the wastewater treatment plant expansion. It's been a two year effort. And we are finally here after a lot of work and effort put in by staff and the contractor and the engineers. This is, we're calling phase two construction services guaranteed maximum price. And a lot of this is going to be a repeat of what we covered last week, Tuesday in the work session, starting with the timeline. So Jacobs received, or we received the 90% package from Jacobs on December 3rd. Molt started their 90% cost estimate immediately after, came back with a first estimate of 45.8 million without contingencies. And they also included about 60 VE items which were identified and we looked into those throughout January, town staff Jacobs and Moltz. And we realized about $2 million in VE savings after that effort, which leads us to, or led us to the guaranteed maximum price before you tonight. $43,546,349. Adding 10% contingencies onto that brings the bottom line to $47,900,984. That's all tabulated to the right. And that's also an excerpt from the Moltz GMP package, which is also in your package. We covered this last week. I'll go over it briefly here. Reasons for the cost increases primarily related to design scope and specs from the 60% level changes. Substantial increases in materials, pricing, rebar, metal buildings, fuel, electrical, et cetera. And most impactfully, supply chain issues. And that's the RF requirements, those being American iron and steel and Davis Bacon wages. So Moltz did estimate that the American iron and steel and Davis Bacon wages each added about 1.6 million to the price. So just a couple of words on the Davis Bacon wages. We talked about this last week. Wanted to highlight a couple of little things here. So in 2021, there were six updates to the Davis Bacon wages and two so far this year already. So a lot of changes have been occurring over the last year through those wages. So when Moltz prepared their GMP, they had their subcontractors, you know, give them numbers and those numbers was lock in the Davis Bacon wages and become part of the GMP that's in front of you right now, which will be paid through the entire term of the contract. So everything is kind of summarized on that red text on the bottom. Timing is of the essence here. Wages are locked in at the bid, not contract award. Those wages are good for 90 days and that is expiring, I believe it's around April 1st. John can speak to that. So John needs to get con, John Tucker from Moltz needs to be contracting with his subs before then to lock in those Davis Bacon wages. GMP bid, bid process. So Moltz did use a competitive bidding process to come up with a GMP. In most cases, three bids were received from subcontractors and suppliers. And those were pretty much within 10% of each other and most of them indicating that the drawings and specs were, were interpreted consistently. It's a good sign. Most bids were held for that 90 days, but some of them were not able to due to market and supply chain, chain issues. So as, as I just said, to minimize cost escalations, Moltz needs to execute subcontracts and purchase orders in March. Construction schedule, we did add three months to that to avoid paying significant overtime hours to laborers. We're now looking at a substantial completion date of August 1st, 2024 and a final completion date, October 30th, 2024. So about three months from what we were originally thinking. However, most did indicate to us that most plant, most plant facilities will be online June 1st, 2024 pending a favorable progress and early notice proceed, which is what we're targeting right now. So what happens next? Contract execution. We won't be able to sign this contract until we get the SRF loan approval on March 4th. And I believe Vic will speak to that a little bit more in detail in the next action items in front of you. After we sign that contract, we issue a notice to proceed. Moltz will then proceed to contract with their subcontractors, issue purchase orders to lock in those prices. And then mobilization will start shortly after that. So the phase two contract package consists of exactly what I showed you last week, the contract amendment, a cover sheet, EJCC change order form and Moltz's GMP package, which identifies the guaranteed maximum price, the 10% contingencies and a total price of 47.9 million. Supplemental conditions are also added and it will be included into this contract. These are things that needed to be changed from the general conditions that were provided in phase one of the contract. I was working with Dan with that on the other last few, few weeks on that. So that will be included in this contract. It's also in your package. So that leads us to the staff recommendations, authorized execution of contract with Moltz and then not to exceed amount of 47.9, which is inclusive of a GMP and 10% total contingencies. I've got the entire team here mostly. Hopefully we'll be able to answer any questions that you all have. Thank you for your attention and consideration.
Questions on the side?
No questions, just a quick comment. In the beginning of the presentation, you kept referencing VE and I just, for the people online, that's value engineering. And I think that that's important to bring up because those were cuts that you made to the project to try and bring the cost down. And I think it's, again, it's important to highlight that.
Yeah, value engineering.
And what that means.
Yeah, value engineering. That's an effort that took place in January after Moltz identified about 60 items for consideration. And those VE items that we identified are included in the board package. There's, I think, three or four sheets, tables that identify each item that we went through.
Thank you.
Questions over here?
I just had a couple of quick questions. So earlier you had mentioned that the American iron and steel and the Davis Bacon, that was 1.6 million apiece, correct? So a total of 3.2 roughly that was added because of those two items.
That's correct.
And was that addition simply from the time of the 60% to the 90%? Or was that throughout the entirety of the project that that increase was realized?
That's just for, correct me if I'm wrong, John, but that's just for the 90% price. So that out of that guaranteed maximum price, 1.6 of that is attributed to American iron and steel and 1.6 of that is attributed to Davis Bacon wages.
Okay. So what was the increase from the 60% to the 90%?
With those Davis Bacon wages?
I, I don't think we have that tabulated. Go ahead.
It was about a million dollars from the 60 to the 90. Maybe a little bit more.
A piece or total?
Total.
For the two?
For the, yes, for the two. Our wage requirements went up a little bit and then the AIS is a very large portion of that. Also, the AIS, when I guess the supply chain is already tightened and then we tighten it more because we have to go to American iron and steel, it seemed to be raising prices from 10 to 15% on steel items to more like 20 to 25% on steel items. So a large portion of that was AIS and we did capture as much as we could and from our past projects at the 60, but about a million, maybe a million and a half. It's very hard to tell when we bid it out. We bid out only American iron and steel. We don't allow other items, but from talking to suppliers and percentages, that's what I came up with, about a million and a half. In addition to, this is from the 60 to the 90.
Got it. Okay. So just to make sure that I understand correctly, because I was under the impression that of the increase, what was our 60% number, Dave, that was presented?
I don't know at all off the top of my head, trustee Gator, but it is listed in one of the tables there in the contract. I believe the 60% number.
I don't need exactly. You can give me roughly. Was it like 40 million or something? Forty or something? Was that pre-contingency or post-contingency?
That was with a 7% contingency total.
And then we went from 7% to 10%, which was that we thought that was, and that made sense. Okay. And so then we went from roughly 40 with contingencies to 47, nine or 48 with contingencies and about a million dollars of that 60 to 90 was more or less just Davis Bacon and American iron and steel.
Yes.
Correct? Okay. And then when you guys bid the 60, were you guys bidding that based off of the American iron and steel and the Davis Bacon at that time that was current? Were you guys using an older number? Cause that, I don't, I don't know what it changed. Did it, did those, did the requirements literally change by a million dollars in that? Cause it's only been about a three month time period.
I don't know that it's, some of it is, some of it is the Davis Bacon. And there's a new, I guess, wage requirement set out. You have to go by that and that is a little bit of it. Um, the other part of it is just the, in fact, the steel prices and the supply chains are tough right now. And when you already have, like I said, a, a supply chain that's already tight and you add another requirement on it, it seemed to go from our past experiences, usually that AIS adds 10 to 15% on all bolts, rebar, every steel item, which is a lot of a water treatment plant or wastewater plant. And with the, what we're seeing on these, talking to suppliers, more like a 25 to 30% on pipe with an already heightened pipe price because of normal or I guess supply chain issues and high steel prices that increase to make it quite a bit more.
Okay. So it sounds like more of that cost probably came from the American iron and steel than an actual change in the Davis Bacon from the 60 to 90.
What we did from 60 to 90 was a $2 an hour wage increase for our entire crew wage, which is right at $340,000 with just ours, not our subcontractors. And then you have your burden on top of that along with subcontractors. So I'm guessing that is about a half a million dollars from the Davis Bacon would be my guess on the requirements from the last six months.
Got it. Okay. Thank you. There's one more question that I had had. Second here. Do we have a guarantee that our, so this is for Dave, that you're, not as, do we have a guarantee that the state is going to approve our SRF loan? Or what happens if they don't approve the loan?
That one I might deflect to Vic. No, all indications are that, that will be approved for that loan on March 4th. And then we have to get that resolution signed and, and then the loan approval sign, which Vic will talk to. So and again, this contract, we don't execute this contract until we get, yeah. Yeah. And nor does John start issuing purchase orders or contracts with his subs.
From a public works standpoint, what happens if, for whatever reason, the SRF says no, what do we do?
What's over?
Well, I don't know. So I'm asking the question, it's kind of important.
We're dead in the water.
We'll have to get back with you on that one, but it's not good. Okay. No other questions?
All right. Anyone else? Oh, go ahead. Okay. All right. All right. So, so now we got a 10% contingency, $4.2 million. Who's managing that?
So the contingency, we're asking you guys for approval of the 47.9, which includes the contingencies. Who manages that? Well, that, that's up to the town. We cannot spend any contingencies money, monies until it gets approved by town staff and then come on, coming up to you for a decision afterwards, depending on the purchase amount. So that's all controlled by the town.
Okay. So it's in our court.
Yeah, it's in our cart. And that's for the contractor contingencies as we're labeled and also for the owner contingencies.
Okay. And after this, we execute this, we're not going to see another Davis Bacon increase.
No, they'll be locked in.
Right, Nathan? Where's Nathan?
Yeah. They're locked in. As long as we get it executed before April 1st, which is that 90 day period that they, that they hold those days of bacon wages till.
Well, I was gonna say, I mean, I, obviously we don't know what the state is gonna do, but I don't think they want to see us fail. I mean, I mean, there's that whole thing where, and it's on wastewater that if we don't, aren't in compliance by a certain day, $54,000 per day per violation. Is that a not completing it in time, not meeting discharge requirements? What actually triggers that horrible thing?
Discharge requirements. Plant operator Mike and Bob can speak to some of that as far as getting the construction completed. We have to have that completed. For the loan agreement, I believe we have to have that show completion of the project by what the contract details, substantial completion date and final completion date.
Thank you very much.
Bob Gowing, Public Works Director. Those are maximum fine amounts. In general, if we get to construction before we reach 95% organic capacity, they will work with us through the, the whole thing. You know, you said it pretty well. Generally, the state is here to help us be successful and we've been roundly impressed with all the people that we worked with through the SRF program. And that includes the regulators at CDPG as well. So yes, it could be bad, but we don't really anticipate that, to be honest. And history shows that they will be willing to work with us as long as they know we're making progress. And that's, that's the point of why we're here tonight. One of those points.
This, I had one other thing and you had brought up something that I would ask if you could just re, bring it back up, Dave. At the work session, you talked, you discussed how the contingency works as well as if the project comes under budget, that there's incentive for the contractor to do that as well. Could you just cover that real quickly? I thought it was helpful and I think it'd be good for the.
So there's, there's a cost allocation of savings in the contract we have written for phase one that identifies, I think it's 10% right down of savings that we share with the contractor, which works, works as an incentive to them to get it completed on time and under budget. We share those, those savings with the contractor up to 10% based upon the guaranteed maximum price, which is that $43 million, not that $47 million number. So that is an incentive. And as far as the contingencies, 5% for contractor and 10%, or 5% for contractor, 5% for owner. Those aren't tapped into unless owners approve that. So those, those are the cover unforeseen in the project moving forward, obviously contingencies, things that might come up. And there's also with the, with the project delivery method, there's also the opportunity for negative change orders. It's been happening in several projects around the front range here recently. Kyle can talk to a little, little bit about that, but savings where we have a negative change order, which basically just will, and will add up, add into the contingencies that we already have.
And so just to be clear, those contingencies, if we don't spend it, all of that $4 million or so stays with the town.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Good. One more.
Well, just a quick question that if the contingencies aren't used, they stay with the town, would we then be just giving, because that's, that would be part of the debt. Can we return that to the state if the project's all done? And then like, hey, we got an extra four million bucks. Can that help us out?
We, you know, we asked that question. Might need Megan to help me out with this one. But the answer is, there, there are some things we can do with that. We could either put those monies towards other parts of the project, wastewater plant expansion. We've been talking about doing some rehab to the arbals, their erosion bases that we have. Once we empty those, we don't know what we're gonna find. We could have a million dollar price tag on top of us in 2024, 25. That could qualify to use some of those extra monies if we don't use them, right? And if for some reason we can't figure out a way to put that money to use, what the state will ultimately do is work that back as a credit in a reduced interest payment. So now that gets tricky. I don't know exactly when that takes place, whether that's in 2024, 25 or at the end of the loan. I don't have all that information right now.
Thank you.
One of the things that we're allowing for is to reimburse ourselves for the design costs. So if we do get to a situation where we have some additional money left in the loan, we'll be able to reimburse ourselves from the SRF for the design cost for Jacobs that we've been paying for out of cash. So we would still see that coming in as revenue to the, to the sewer fund.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll open it up to the public at this point. Anyone in the public want to come up and talk about this? It's a good time. Okay, we'll open it up to the public at this point. Anyone with public want to come up and talk about this? It's a good time.
Um, so I have a couple of quick questions. One, where do I access the original contract? Cause I'd like to see it um, so that it makes sense with the changes that are being suggested in here. Two, what is the split on the savings if that does occur? Is it fifty fifty, seventy, thirty? I'll let you answer that.
If, if we see savings from the GMP number, we get ninety and Maltz gets ten, ten percent of that. And you can give us a call anytime and come see the contract. We're not going to print it out for you. It's literally like four thousand pages, but.
I'll just come hang out for a day.
And then um, the other question I have is on an oversight. I know you guys have a lot on your plate with all of this and these are two huge projects at about eighty million dollars. What is the oversight on um, the billing that they're going to be submitting to the owner? Are they going to be showing proofs of all the Davis Bacon, all the costs for the supplies from the subcontractors? Um, not to shame subcontractors at all, but occasionally they will keep their bid prices where it was, even if there's a potential for cost savings, which in this volatile market, there is potential for cost savings. And I just want to make sure that as the owners, the town of Wellington, that we have an opportunity to kind of checks and balances on that and that nothing gets lost in the process.
For the pay ups, we will turn in a pay application. Um, we will have a full accounting statement of all of our hours, all of our labor, everything. We will have to give the state a report to qualify for the Davis Bacon wages, so we will report to them. We will also um, have interviews on site uh, to prove to the state that we are making all the Davis Bacon wages. Um, in addition to that, will be um, all subcontractors pay applications, all subcontractors, um, materials bought, all of our materials bought, every invoice will all be in one packet in every pay application. It will be given to the engineer for approval. Once approved, we'll go through Wellington's approval process.
Okay. So subs are going to give you their invoices?
Subcontractors, when we write them a purchase or a subcontractor agreement, will be on a lump sum subcontract that they bid out and they will turn in pay applications with a schedule of values.
All right. That, that answered your question?
Um, yeah, I think so. I just, I just know too much about everything that's going on in the industry right now. And I just want to make sure because every penny counts in this town and I'm sure you guys are great. I just really want to emphasize, we can't afford to get taken for a ride. So please take care of our money. Okay?
Thank you. All right. Anyone else?
Okay, Shirl Teets, four, five, two, five, Ingalls Drive. Um, so knowing experience with Davis Bacon wages and being in electrical field, the last update I know of was June twenty twenty one, when they updated the electrical costs to approve for January. So when was the sixty percent? So my question is, when was the sixty to ninety percent done to bid? Um, and if it fell within that twenty twenty one time for that increase, then it should have been noted or paid attention to for that increase. Um, and then my other question is, in, you said at ninety five percent, we start seeing some pretty hefty fees when we're doing the offloading for wastewater, correct? Is it ninety five percent and we're at ninety two?
Can I answer now? Um, that ninety five percent number is a compliance number. When we get a certain amount of wastewater in, um, and that has to be below our design capacity, our permitted capacity by five percent. So that's a cap on organic loading, really didn't have anything to do with, with money or anything like that. Except that if uh, we run afoul of it, they could fine us up to that amount. But we don't, again, don't believe that that's gonna happen. That answered the question.
Kind of, but when it was at ninety five percent, correct?
It's no, we have not reached ninety five percent.
Nobody's ninety five percent when you start possibly facing those kinds of fines.
Uh, no, the fines are actually related to, well, yes, okay, yeah, it is about the ninety five percent. But again, the requirement is that we be under construction when we hit ninety five percent. So um, again, it's, it's a matter of us working with the state, keeping them informed. Uh, Dave's on the phone with them like every other day, keeping them informed of our status. And that makes a huge difference with their comfort level with where we're at and where we're headed.
And is that under construction or under contract? So when you sign the contract, is it, do you have to be digging dirt first or?
When we sign the contract, we're technically under construction.
All right. So, and it was my understanding when I met with you at that ninety two percent, we still hadn't accounted for the middle school, high school in those costs, correct? In the percentage? Got it. Thanks. That's it.
Thank you. Anyone else like to come up? All right, we'll close the public meeting and bring it back to our board for final round if anything. If there's nothing, I'd like to get a motion to approve the um, CMR contract amendment for the guaranteed maximum price.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Gator.
Yes.
Trustee Kenny.
Yes.
McDonald.
Yes.
Trustee White House.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Knutson.
Yes.
Mayor Hammond.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you so much for all of your hard work on that.
Took a long time to get to this point. We've got a water plant coming up too.
Thank you all.
Move on to our next action item. This is the ordinance number five dash twenty twenty two. This is an ordinance in the town of Wellington, Colorado, acting and by through the town of Water, Wastewater Enterprise, approving a loan from the Colorado Water Resources and Power Development Authority to finance wastewater related improvements, authorizing execution of a loan agreement and a bond to document the loan and providing for payment of the bond and the net revenue of the wastewater system. Vic's gonna try to explain what all that means right now.
Yeah, this is pretty complicated. Thank you. Victoria Runkel, interim finance director, um, town of Wellington. Yes. So um, I'd like to also appreciate Megan, who has been working on this. Um, and also our city or town attorney on this. So it's not just me. And then they said, you go present. Okay. Um, so there you are. Uh, yes, this is a very complicated deal and it's actually going to go through the state. So let me walk through the, uh, there goes, sorry about that. The state loan process, uh, why does it need to be approved now? Well, the, if you were doing your own issuance, you do something, you put it all together and you do something called a preliminary official statement. And you go out into the market and you say, you know, well, we think we're going to issue about, you know, fifty million. And uh, and that's what you do. And the, and the market tells you kind of what, you know, the market tells you, oh, we're interested or we're not interested in what the interest rates will be. So this is what we're basically doing tonight is we're giving the state, we're saying, and we're not going to borrow fifty million, but we're saying they have to have a number. And their number, we've been working with them for a long time and their number is fifty million. So we say tonight, you'll be passed, hopefully you'll be passing an ordinance that says, yes, state, we would like to borrow fifty million in your program and their program's going to be huge. It, it's going to be, you know, I don't have no idea, but it will be over half a billion dollars. So they're, they're borrowing for a lot of projects and we're just one little piece of it. So that's, so they want to know what is our maximum financing that needs to be borrowed? That's where it is. On the day of the sale, you don't borrow. I mean, you always take it down. It's always a lower number and that's just the normal process and everyone knows what the process is and it works. And, and you know, they know. So we have till end of the April, uh, the team will meet in March fourth. But we have till eight, the end of April to say, really, the number is, and it's going to be forty seven million is what the number is going to be. But we have some time, if there, if it was necessary, we would have time to continue to finesse that. We really, we're not going to do that much anymore. We don't want to do that. So the state however, has to do their preliminary official statement and get everything together because this is significant undertaking. They have to have a meeting on Ma- March fourth where they get together and they decide what, you know, what are we borrowing for? It's a significant state process that, that we're not really a part of, but our borrowing is. Um, the ordinance uh, tells again the state what, what's our maximum. And um, again, we have till April. So that's the reason why we have to do it tonight. Why use the state program? And I, I do know that we had some questions about that. Well, large borrowing does save smaller organizations like the town of Wellington significant money. If you had to do this yourselves right away, Moody's or Standard and Poor's would charge you at least twenty five thousand dollars just to rate, rate it. And you'd have to have fifty million dollars rated. And you wouldn't do an unrated fifty million dollar deal. So it saves an enormous amount of money for the town to do it, you know, in a consortium, if you will, with the state. The state has a triple A bond rating. Um, I, I could not find that you have a triple A bond rating. I did call Moody's today and you just ha, my guess is you haven't issued rated debt for a while. You, you've always, not always, you have two issues, but your larger issues have always gone through the state. You have two small issues that did not go through the state, but they do not have a rating with Moody's at this time. That's normal. Uh, so, so they have a higher rating and that will translate into lower interest rates for everybody who's in the issuance. Uh, and again, the state will only charge the town eighty percent of the interest rate that they get. So they absorb um, as part of their package for uh, helping towns do the right thing with um, water and sewer, they absorb some cost of the interest rate. That's, I mean, that was part of the deal. Yeah. The specifics of the ordinance, it does say at this time, a maximum of fifty million. We will only borrow that which we need and um, we will lower this. You know, it'll be the number it is by April, but we did have to put in a worst case scenario for the board. We are working on the state also on an additional program they have. And we will be borrowing and we'll bring it back to you, but that will actually lower the amount of money that we borrow from here. So if we can plug into another program that they have for environmental issues for about three million dollars, then we will actually lower the forty seven million in this issue. We have two pots of money. So we will lower that. And again, we have till April. Um, again, you'd have to do that. And um, on March twenty second, a final number will be approved by both the board and the state and we expect it to be closer to forty five million when we get all done, call the numbers. Sorry. Um, at this time, the board, uh, the interest rate in the ordinance is three point five percent. Again, that we only pay eighty percent of that. That's the worst case scenario today. Uh, so again, our rate would be, i- if it was eighty percent of three point five, it'd be two point eight. Three point five would be significantly higher than the would, state would have to borrow today, even today. Today was a really bad day, if you follow those kind of numbers. Um, but we do believe that three point five will be the worst. They will not issue debt. I've talked to them a long time. They will consider what happens if the interest rates go up to four. Now you say, well, what happens then? What happens is you can pull the deal. I mean, if a bad thing happens that day, and I don't want to talk about the bad things, because in my opinion, they've all happened today. But um, and so, yeah, on so many levels. The, um, but what you can do is you pull the deal that day and then you go back maybe two weeks later. Cause it, everything calms down. Okay? So um, their number, their absolute top number is three point, there's four, four percent. And our ordinance says, you know, we're really in this for three point five, if you will. Okay? Because if I put four in eighty percent, that was concerning to me. So I said, no, I won't agree to that. Um, so there you have it that. Uh, again, you know, they, they watch the market. They have, you know, floors of people who watch the market, know what's going on. Again, that's a savings for us because we don't have that kind of talent to do that every day. Um, again, the state is, needs to begin their development of their debt issuance program today. And, and that's why we had to give them this ordinance. And they need this ordinance, I mean, it's all connected, if you will. Um, they need the ordinance to pass, um, because they need to know that we will borrow the money if they issue the debt. And you know, and that we will do the project. So that's what they want is this ordinance, um, approved for that, for that. So the recommendation is that the ordinance, um, adopt the ordinance, please. And so we can continue to work with the state and of course, we will keep you informed of the borrowing. And one final thing, our bond counsel, um, from Kutech Rock is available if we have, if we want to dial them in. I mean, they're watching as we talk. So Mario Trimble from Kutech Rock is, uh, helped a lot with this too. And there it is. So that's all I have. If there's any questions.
Any questions? Vic?
Well, this looks a lot more complicated than I've, anything I've ever looked at. I mean, this is not buying a house or buying a car. This is nuts. I mean, yeah, I mean, there, there was, I don't know if it's this document or the other one, I had those questions about how we're not actually, we're borrowing, we're thinking about borrowing fifty billion dollars, but it's actually not considered debt. Or I was like, I didn't understand that. Or maybe that's just really common in this type of thing, but I have no idea what those, what that meant. Where's that page one? I don't know.
Well, it is, I mean, those were good catches, by the way. I mean, tho, that is in the document. And the issue is that um, that we're, the town for me was very confusing. You are borrowing money against the sewer utility. All right? And so you should, something happened, the, the general fund, the sales tax does not have to be used to pay the debt. And that, that language was about, when it said the town, it was referring, it didn't say that, but it was referring to the general fund. So you're only obligating the sewer utility for the debt. You're not obligating the entire budget of the town to pay this debt.
Okay?
Is that what makes it exempt from Tabor is because it's not using property tax?
Go ahead.
Wouldn't say it's exempt from Tabor. It's, it's a loan or the entity that is taking on the debt is the town of Wellington Wastewater Enterprise.
Yes.
And when you're taking on debt as a wastewater enterprise, you're borrowing against the revenue of that enterprise. Under Tabor, you need to go to the voters to get approval for, to take on debt as the town. That's only for general obligations as the town of Wellington. That's really why you create these enterprises like this, it kind of um, silos that money and that obligation. So this is part of why we have enterprises for wastewater and water and stormwater.
Thank you.
No, thank him.
Trustee Gator.
I just wanted to confirm that the length of period on the loan was for thirty years. Cause I know that was a discussion that was had in the timeframe. So I want to make sure that this is a thirty year loan, correct?
Yes.
Payment penalty, right?
No. No, yeah, no prepayment penalty. Um, yes, I can't say that with a thousand percent confidence. But what you can do with the money is you can always put it in a, you know, in a reserve account and use it to pay your debt. So that's what you would do. I mean, that's what I would recommend.
Okay. Got it. So we, because I was actually thinking, because that was my other question is if we do realize those savings and I understand there might be other projects that we could use. I would much prefer we find a way to help ease the residents, not pay for the projects. Um, but so that is something we could, like you'd suggest, we could have, hold that and that could pay the, you know, the, the loan payment for two years. And for those two years, maybe we could reduce the rate or something. Okay.
That's, I mean, that's one option. And we're going to talk about the reimbursement resolution here in a moment. But, but yes, that's one option. Yeah.
Okay. No other comments. It's so, go ahead.
Real quick, do you know, do we earn interest on our reserve accounts?
We, we will earn interest in our reserve account.
Do you know what that interest rate is?
Buck is, I mean, one point five ish, one point seven five right now.
Okay.
It will go up. Um, but it won't. Yeah. So one point seven five right now, today.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Good. Um, let's open up the public. Would anybody like to come up here and talk about this? Sure.
Oh, come on.
Well, my question is, but
while my career.
It's pretty complicated for sure. I think we asked all the questions that we have. Ready to go forward.
Oh, I just got an email from our, our bond counsel. There is no prepayment penalty. So we can.
Pay it off faster. That's still, that's, that's the whole, that's the game.
Mario.
That was my question. Okay, thank you. All right. If there's no other public comment, then we'll bring it back to the board for final look. Anyone want to take a crack at the motion?
Um, do we want to hear from our bond council since they are online? Is there any?
Bond counselor?
Is there any reason we shouldn't? Is there any specific?
No, I think Mario's fine. He was just there for any questions.
Okay, perfect. I just wanted to make sure he didn't have any points he wanted to bring up.
Mario's been very engaged in, uh, this ordinance from the beginning. And he's worked with the town on ordinances for, uh, debt that's been, that was taken on back in twenty nineteen. He's, he, he's gone through this with fine new comb. So unless you have a specific question, I don't think we need to.
I just want to make sure he was heard if he did have something to say.
Yes.
I'm saying it.
Um, you guys keep on saying ordinance, but it says resolution in the packet. I'm just wondering which one is it?
There's an ordinance and a resolution.
Resolutions.
They look very, very similar though.
Resolutions and next.
Thank you, Mario.
Okay.
Ready for motion?
Yes, I'm ready for a motion.
I will make a motion to approve ordinance number oh five twenty twenty two, an ordinance of the town of Wellington, Colorado, acting by and through the town wastewater enterprise, approving a loan from Colorado Water Resources and Power Development Authority to finance wastewater related improvements, authorizing the execution of a loan agreement and a bond to document the loan and providing for payment of the bond from net revenue of the wastewater system.
Oh, please.
Trusty Gator?
Yes.
Trusty Kenny?
Yes.
See McDonald?
Yes.
Trusty White House?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Knutson?
Yes.
Mayor Hammond?
Yes. Next one. This is the resolution.
Yes, this is, I don't have a PowerPoint on this, just
That's okay. I got resolution number twelve dash twenty twenty two. This resolution of the town of Wellington, Colorado, acting by and through the town of wastewater enterprise, declaring its official intent to reimburse itself with the proceeds of the issuance of the municipal bonds for certain capital expenditures undertaken or to be undertaken by the town, generally identifying the capital expenditures and providing certain other matters in connection therewith. Who wrote that? Did you write that?
It was Mario.
So the only question I have for you on this one, Victoria, is the, the reimbursement, does that fit within the bounds of our fund balance policy?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Yes. So what this is, um, in a quick little thing, every time you issue debt and the state, I mean, it was like, where's your reimbursement resolution? I asked that a couple of months ago and, and you hadn't done it. Every time you consider issuing debt, you should do a reimbursement resolution and not the best practice for me and really was, I ran up a reimbursement resolution every January. Just said, in case we issue debt this year, and what it does is any expenses that you make can be charged off to the bonds. Doesn't have to be. Okay. But it allows you to. And so you, I mean, if you have a lot of money remaining at the end of the process, then you can capture the Jacobs costs as an example. It, or you can put it, or you can put it aside, or you can do prepayment. You can do a lot of things. It all will end up saving the utility money at, at some point, right? And that's the point of a reimbursement resolution is just to identify any costs that you want to be able to capture within the bond, bonds. Uh, you don't have to do it, but it, you can't do it if you don't have a reimbursement resolution. The reimbursement resolution is required by the IRS, and it also cannot be done more than eighteen months before you issue debt. So, you know, there is a timeframe. So there's lots of, there's lots of rules. That's why we do have bond council. You know, anytime we want to use it, we have to talk to them. But it, it just gives you some protection in case something does say you save a lot of money. You might want to recapture some of your costs. You can also just put it, you know, pay it off. You could do a lot of things. But at least it gives you as many options as possible. And that's why you, you know, usually do a reimbursement resolution when you issue debt.
I have a question on the first sheet of that executive summary. It says, because this resolution had not been adopted before February twenty second, we can only capture project expenditures in arrears of the past sixty days.
I apologize, I forgot that because that is true. Um, the answer is because we didn't adopt it eighteen months ago, the other IRS rule is any expenses that we've made in the last sixty days is all that we can go back and capture. We can't go back, you know, eight, six months ago, um, eight months ago, because we didn't pass the resolution. I'm sorry, I forgot that because I always pass them early.
Uh, no, no, no worries. So i- i- general principle is, is your recommendation that we should issue a resolution like this at the beginning of each year, even if we may never, may not, as just sort of a, a
Yeah.
Okay.
And if you're going to issue debt, I mean, if there's any possibility that you're going to issue any debt, um, yes, you, you, you pass a
And, and just because something like this is passed, doesn't mean you're going to issue debt.
Nope.
Means it just gives you some more flexibility, correct?
Absolutely correct.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Trusty Gator, you want to comment on this? No, Trusty Kenny? Okay, I think I'm good. All right. Uh, public comment at this point. Anyone like to come up and learn a little bit more about what we're trying to do here with this? I'd appreciate it myself.
So with this, we could potentially have extra money in the sewer funds from the loan to re, that would be a reimbursement of costs that we've had in the last sixty days, which is kind of terrible. But, um, how does that benefit the residents?
Um, you would be that, really good question. You, you're using, you'd be using bond money, so spreading the costs over time as opposed to using cash, which is what you're currently doing for the pre, you know, the design and those kind of costs. So you would, you would put those into the bond costs. And, and while you do pay interest on it, you, you know, you have a longer term to pay that. Is that?
Yeah. So in theory, it could alleviate some of the pressure on the residents right now for rates, or is it really just moving money from one place to another and the rates kind of won't, wouldn't be affected?
The rates would not be affected right now because the rates are based on
So you're just holding debt to hold debt? Kind of. A little bit, right?
Cash. You'd have more cash in case, I mean, we don't have but you would have, you would have more cash as a you'd embed the money into the bonds. And, and that's
But it could go in a reserve account or something where we could earn interest, which then would actually be beneficial. Okay.
Well, it's only beneficial equal to One debt resolution per package of debt.
A package, yeah.
Okay.
Yes. You don't have to, yes.
Instead of having to do it annually every January, that, I was starting to get lost there. Thank you.
Okay. Okay.
So, and I think I wanted to clarify because I think the question had been brought up, would this have impact on rates? And I think what we had discussed was that if the contract comes under budget, right? Instead of spending the forty seven million, we only spend forty two, right? And then we have at that point, we have this, call it four million dollars or so of the loan that wasn't used at that point, we could look at. So that's three years down the road, but tomorrow, that's not going to affect rates because of this, because those rates that we passed as a board took in consideration, we're going to have this loan, we're going to have interest on that. That was all factored in. So any potential savings would come from the project coming in under budget, not using the contingency. And then in two years, two and a half years, the board of trustees would then look at, what do we do with these funds? And if the board chooses to, they potentially could find some way to have some impact on rates, but that would be something two years down the road. Not, and again, that's based on the project coming under budget, not, this resolution allows us to have some flexibility in that moving forward, but that's all based on the project coming under budget. That wouldn't be immediate.
It's not to give you, excuse me, it's just not to give you a flexibility. That's, that is the only purpose of this. And the state understands that and did ask for the, you know, said, do you have a reimbursement resolution? And I, and I was like, yeah, you should always have one. Yeah.
Other public comment? Okay, we'll bring it back to our board then. Well, we've been back at the board, so we'll go ahead and fire it around. If there's no other comments or anything else you want to add to it, let's go ahead and take a motion.
I, I do have a quick question.
Okay, let's have it.
If we don't have this, what happens?
Yeah.
The extra money?
You just, if, if you had money remaining, you, you, I mean, you have other options with the money. You just couldn't go back and capture any of the planning, pre-planning, design costs. It's what, it's what it provides for you.
Still end up in the enterprise.
Okay, that's, that was my question. But yeah, that makes sense.
Okay. You want to shot at motion?
Me?
Why yet?
I make a motion to approve resolution twelve dash twenty twenty two, a resolution of the town of Wellington, Colorado, acting by and through the town wastewater enterprise, declaring its official intent to reimburse itself with the proceeds of the issuance of multiple municipal bonds for certain capital expenditures undertaken or to be undertaken by the town, generally identifying the capital expenditures and providing certain other matters in connection therewith.
Second.
Well, please.
Trusty Gator?
Yes.
Trusty Kenny?
Yes.
Trusty McDonald?
Yes.
Trusty White House?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Knutson? Mayor Hammond?
Yes. Thank you, Vic. Move on to something that we might understand. Fireworks, right?
I will do my best.
Twenty two fireworks amendment.
Good evening, Mayor and Board of Trustees, Hallie Sheldon, Management Analyst. So before you tonight is an amendment to our twenty nineteen agreement with Beelake Productions for our fireworks celebration that happens on the fourth of July. The amendment is almost identical to the previous two that you have seen, including, uh, the adjustment in cost to align with our twenty twenty two budget. Uh, the site, which currently is located at that Timmy property off Sixth Street. Um, we have until April first, if this is to be approved, to change that location, if that's the wish of the board. Um, the dates obviously are adjusted. Um, the one thing that is different with this contract this year is related to the insurance. Mr. Ehrlich with Beelake Productions had requested from town staff to adjust the insurance requirements um, due to higher demands and cost for, for that, that need. Um, town staff worked with Mr. Ehrlich, um, we worked with our town attorney. We also worked with our CERSA representatives to make sure that the town wasn't at risk by doing this. Um, everything seemed to be acceptable. Um, if you do have questions about insurance, I'm going to let Mr. Ehrlich speak as well. Um, but otherwise it is under budget. We budgeted forty one thousand five hundred for it. Um, it's coming in at forty one thousand and eighty three dollars. And I would stand for any questions and also Mr. Ehrlich.
Any insurance questions? Go ahead.
And the only question I had is just what would be the impact be of, what is the impact, I guess, of lowering that on you that allows that you requested that change, I guess?
Okay. Well, I've learned more about specialty van insurance than I care to know about. And, um, the main thing that, that the insurance is actually have more coverage now. Because before, when we were with Allied McGowan, um, that we had a five million dollar general aggregate and a one million dollar each occurrence. Uh, what that means is that, uh, each occurrence is an event, if we had an accident or something when we're shooting the show or putting up the show, we'd have up to a million dollars of protection. The town, the town's listed as an additional insured, they'd have a million dollars. The five million dollars is if we have more than one occurrence at more than one event. So if we have, i- if, if we had an accident here and ten people got injured, all ten of them would fall underneath the million dollar umbrella, not the five million dollar umbrella. So I have other, a couple of other shoots that we do. So if somebody got hurt over at our house, at our private show that we do there at the lake, and we filed a, we, and we filed a, a claim, Wellington wouldn't be a part of that claim. Okay? So that's what the general aggregate's for. So in talking to several reps, what I found out is that one, um, general aggregate does just what I explained. Uh, two, soon as you file a claim, the insurance, the, the general aggregate is almost worthless because they'll drop you soon as you file a claim. That's what I was told by Bradley, uh, down at Brown and Brown. And so the whole thing is, is that what we did is we negotiated a two million dollar each occurrence, protect the town for two million dollars on an occurrence, and then a three million general aggregate. So, you know, we're probably, if, if we have an incident, we'll have, we'll probably lose the insurance anyway. Uh, but, uh, um, I talked to several different reps and we ended up working with a company called Ryder Rochacker out of Grand Island, Nebraska. And they've written the policy for the three million aggregate, two million dollar each occurrence. And I'm working with my fireworks importer that they're, they were under McGowan Allied too. And they got canceled too. So they're investigating their options. And they said, when they decide what they're going to do, which will probably be a one million dollar each occurrence, one, two million dollar general aggregate. We'll get our five million dollars or, yeah, five million dollars of general aggregate like we have, but that's no value to the town because you guys aren't going to see five million dollars of coverage. So, but the, to get five million dollars aggregate, we'd have to go to a four million dollar each occurrence.
Yeah.
And that was fifteen grand
Yeah.
For insurance instead of the six that we're paying now. So that's why we check different coverages and different things to try to see how we'd get the best deal. And that's what we came up with. So that's where we're at on insurance. Um, the other interesting thing I found out that is once you engage, we engaged Ryder Rochacker first. Once you engage on special event insurance, all of the representatives are blocked. So I talked to Centennial State, I talked to Brown and Brown, I talked to Milo. I talked to another one, I can't remember the name, and they all declined because all of the insurance, special event providers declined to quote them because Ryder Rochack had already engaged. I didn't know that. That was a, that was news to me that you can't
Can't go shopping out.
Can't go shopping for especially van insurance, the way it sounds. I also talked to Deborah from CISP, CERSA, and asked her if she could help us with a rider on the town policy. And she said that would be double insuring, and they can't do that. So we can't stack insurance policies. So we couldn't have the town get a rider that we would pay for, it'd be in the town's name for the fireworks show. And then I also provide another insurance policy for the fireworks show. Those, when, when if something happened, those, that would cause a big problem when the town and I tried to file a claim. So it turned out just to be pretty crazy. Other reasons for increase in the budget is we're, we are, we're drastically affected by, uh, supply chain. We still do not have a source for three inch shells or large cakes, which is probably thirty percent of the show. Um, we're hoping that they'll get here. They're on the water. Um, we're hoping they get here by the first of May, uh, but right now we have no guarantees. So I am sourcing out to Alabama, Indiana, uh, looking for other sources for shells. Prices are up forty five percent, mainly due to the cost of containers. Hazmat containers went from sixty five hundred dollars to thirty nine thousand. Hazmat containers went from sixty-five hundred dollars to thirty-nine thousand eight to ship a hazmat container across the ocean. And so we are, we're struggling to find what we need, but I, I know, I think we can get it. We may have to buy, we'll get the assortments that we used to get. So where we, where we buy seventy-two shells and we get thirty-six different shells, we may have to buy seventy-two shells and only have five different kinds of shells.
We're certainly not going up to Cheyenne, right?
No, it's not going to Cheyenne. No, I'm not going to go up to Cheyenne. So, but I think, you know, with, with, I got a guy out in Calhoun, a guy, a company out in Indiana that thinks they're going to get their three inch shells and their cakes in early enough, and I can get them from them. But we'll see, we'll be, we'll be scraping till the end here to get it done, but.
What's a cake? In the fireworks lingo, what is a cake?
A cake, a cake is a multi-shot cake, a multi-shot effect. And it usually comes either in a fan where it'll shoot a hundred different shots in like thirty seconds, or it'll shoot twenty-five or thirty large shells just in sequence, bang, 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 like that. So we don't have to reload those all, we just light one fuse and we get thirty breaks. That's a cake, okay? A multi-effect product. Okay?
All right.
So, that's the reasons for the cost increases. I think, I, I would hopefully, when the supply chain gets back to normal, we'll actually see decreases because I would think if competition for shipping the containers goes down, that's our biggest increase. Firework increase was only eight percent is the shipping, is what killed us.
But we're still under budget.
We're still on a budget, but the budget increased quite a bit, so.
No, well, if we get savings, we'll take it, but we're still on a budget.
We'll work with you however we can.
Well, that's good information to know, that we may want to start pre-planning because we always talk about planning for the Fourth of July and July fifth, maybe this year we need to start on July third.
Maybe, maybe, so.
You put on a good show, Brian.
We tried.
And Hallie, I just want to circle back. So the fireworks amendment that we would be looking to approve this evening is prime, the primary change is the insurance, correct?
Correct.
Brian has been doing our fireworks for a very long time, he did go through a competitive bidding process this spring. Thank you so much for doing that, I think that that's important. I know there's not a ton of fireworks vendors out there, but thank you for doing that. And so other than the insurance change, were there any additional major changes to the contract?
Nope, it was just the adjustment of cost to reflect the new budget and the dates to reflect the twenty twenty-two dates instead of twenty twenty-one.
So and then how long, is that a two-year contract?
This is just for this year, and then the intention is to create a new contract moving forward for twenty twenty-three and on.
So would that be another two-year contract, so that'd be twenty twenty-three?
We haven't gotten that far in drafting the new contract for not this year, but next year. But that will be brought to you once that is drafted.
Okay, I, I apologize, I just wasn't sure if that was clear in the, during the bidding process, if it was a multi-year contract or single-year contract.
My understanding of the RFP was it was for twenty-three and twenty-four. However, due to the cost issues and, and, and lack of information or certainty of not only product supply and pricing, I did not provide any pricing for twenty-four. So I'm happy to, if you negotiate twenty-three, we'll jump off that bridge when we get to twenty-four.
I just, the, the reason why I'm asking is I know that there, our fireworks vendors are far and few in between, and with supply chains being an issue, just ensuring that we can continue on our small-town tradition of providing a top-notch Fourth of July.
Yeah.
Absolutely, I suspect we'll probably do just an amendment similar, once we have the new contract for twenty twenty-four, to reflect the budget needs.
Thank you.
Sorry, thank you, Mayor Hammond.
Clearing all that up, okay, appreciate it. Public life comment on the fireworks? Come on up.
So, this Shrell Teets, four five two five Ingles Drive, I just want to say, as the Fourth of July is near and dear to my own heart, working with Y on CAC, thank you. I've never had a disappointing show, and I have sat in trash bags and went between my truck and outside to be able to watch a show, is it three years ago? We had the torrential down, yep, torrential downpour, and at the last minute, we were able to have the show anyways, soaking wet. So I just want to say thank you. And my other question is, I know we had had discussions about schools being closed on the middle school for the summer. Do we know if that is a guarantee for it to be closed? Because that might affect where people are actually able to sit to watch the fireworks show.
Any concerns we had with construction is on the actual building and not on the fields outside of the, where people usually sit for the fireworks? So we're not concerned at this time about that.
Lowry Moyer, three eight one four Harrison, I just have a question, and this may go to the Activity Council or you. I'm wondering, when I look at the budget for the fireworks, if there has been a recent, like, survey or questionnaire of the town about the video, because I've been out in that field several times, I see lots of people come either in the middle of that or during, and several people, you know, the people in that one field can't even see it. So I'm wondering, when it's an eighth of the budget, if that might be something we could look at? And if there is not an overwhelming desire to keep it, look at alternatives like music or radio stations. I'm not saying cut it, I'm saying, has anyone asked the people? That's all.
Yeah, I think that we've, we've talked in the past about providing opportunities to broadcast it. I think there have been some concerns in the past with copyright issues, and I can let Brian speak to that in, in more depth. But there, you know, that, that is something that is often commented on in public comment, that people do enjoy the audio and visual portion as well as the fireworks portion.
There was a survey that was completed after the Fourth of July last year. I've yet to see any of the responses yet, and I'm not quite sure if that was one of the questions. But it, I would love to see the survey results in general, because there's a lot of items about Fourth of July I think that a lot of people were able to weigh in on. So I think that's a fantastic idea. But there was a survey that occurred, I just don't know if that was one of the items, but I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, I'd be curious just to see it too, especially with it having moved and how that affected people as well. Maybe something to consider, like you said, broadcasting, and that might be a copyright issue. But if people could, because several people watch from their homes too, be able to listen to that on the radio while they're watching from their homes.
We do provide an FM transmission of the show. So you can listen to it on, on audio, and we, and we do put that on there so that.
Can you talk into the mic, please?
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
We, we, we do do a broadcast of the, of FM broadcast on ninety-one six, guess, ninety-one six. Whatever we find a station, and, and then we have a license to broadcast at fifteen watts. It's not very strong, only goes about two miles. So if you're in the outskirts, you may have a hard time picking it up. But we have done that broadcast in the past, and we do that every, every year. The video, we cannot, we cannot broadcast that out. So, okay?
Good questions.
I was just going to say, we listened to the broadcast last year, and we do it every year now. So I've got two special needs children and one adult special needs child, and one adult special individual in my home. And none of them can take being that close to the fireworks to be like over at the middle school. So we park kind of over where the new high school is. And I just want to say thank you so much, sir, because they're not able to participate in a lot of those things in person because they have sensory issues. And it's wonderful to park far enough away that I can put headphones on them and they can still watch them, and they're amazed. But the ones who can take off the headphones and listen to the music, and I got to tell you, watching those kids dance to patriotic music just touches my heart every year, thank you.
Y, Schwindeman, Chris, I'm the Chair of the CAC, and I just wanted to say, I also really enjoy this event. But I do want to, and this is something we'll take back to our meeting, we actually have it next week. But we'll try and figure out a way to better advertise that it is on the radio. I actually didn't know that, and I was involved with it last year, so. I'm like, wait, what, it was on the radio? I did not know that. So we'll, we'll come up with a way to make sure we work together and advertise that better to everyone in town, so, thank you.
We'll definitely do that. Yeah.
We will, we'll also be doing a survey this year, but, well, we'll make sure we add that to the survey this year, so, thank you.
Are the survey results available somewhere?
Yes, they are, it's actually still open, in case anyone wanted to, to continue to put right feedback. That was, that was the wish of the CAC, so it's still open on the Community Activities Commission's page. So we are rolling answers right now.
Thank you.
You know, I'm glad you brought up that, about your kids being able to put the headphones on and hear that. I, that's, that's pretty special to hear, I didn't realize how that could impact. Right. And see the fireworks.
Right. And it's only money that makes it bigger, so, I mean. But we did in the past discuss putting a split screen so that people can see from the junior high side or from the elementary side, and from the junior high side, you can put two screens up there, just, you know.
So whatever, we can set screens all over town.
I, I'm trying, any other public comment? Okay, we're going to bring it back to the board then.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
I, maybe I'm not understanding the, the value of it, but I personally carry one million dollars of insurance. So how is this type of a, that two million is sufficient, or previously one million? So I, I just don't, liability-wise, it seems like an insignificant amount if, for example, ten people got hurt. So, and I see a lot more potential people being hurt, more than ten people. Two million is enough for events?
Hallie, Hallie may have answered some of those questions as well. We, we reached out to Sursa, you know, when we looked at the contract that was drafted in twenty nineteen, it had five million dollar general aggregate, and then the two million dollar for the importer. And we weren't sure where those numbers had come from. And so we did some looking around at other communities and other contracts. Hallie talked to Sursa about what they would recommend for an event like this, and the recommendations we saw said that this three million dollars that was in this contract is wholly appropriate.
Okay, great, I just want to verify that because I, and then the other thing is, I'm super thankful that we have that counsel for Sursa. Like, this is just one of the examples of how valuable it is that we can reach out to them for anything and have this kind of feedback. So I, I'm really glad that we have that. That's all I got.
I was going to say, yeah, the one million dollar insurance that we, you and I might have, we're not shooting off pyrotechnics in front of a bunch of people.
I mean, it's, it's a higher.
If there's an issue, yes, it would probably be more than ten people, but almost not. I mean, the safety practices that we put in place, that if something catastrophically failed out there in the field, it should not reach the audience. We put those calculations in to keep the audience safe, in case anything. We did have a low blow a few years ago, for those that were sitting along the road, which, if you were to change anything. It scares me the most, because those vehicles parked along the fence are seven feet, seven feet away from the fallout area. Okay, I mean, I just, but, but no, that, that calculation is set up that way to protect all, all participants.
You got enough?
Okay.
You got enough insurance, you feel good?
I feel good.
One, I had one final comment.
Yeah.
Will Sixth Street be closed during the setup and actual shooting of the fireworks?
Always is.
Okay, because I think we need to work on better signage, there was some confusion about that last year.
Okay, close it about noon.
Mr. Ehrlich, thank you so much for your ongoing commitment to this community. Because over the last ten years, you've invested your personal time, personal money. All kind, yeah, lots of, and I've seen some of the frustrations and headaches that you've been through as the regulations and the safety protocols have changed over the years. And we are so lucky to have somebody locally to provide such a phenomenal show. And it's because of you that our Fourth of July fireworks show is state-renowned. People come from all over to come watch our fireworks show. So thank you so much for sticking with this community.
It's a joy, so.
You've come a long way, Brian, since you started. Running around with a wic. Any other comments on the board? Okay, can I get a motion to approve the twenty twenty-two fireworks amendment?
I'll make a motion that we approve the twenty twenty-two fireworks amendment.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Kenny?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Whitehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Knutson?
Yes.
Mayor Hammond?
Yes, all right, thanks, we look forward to it. Thanks for all the comments, too. We're going to close this regular portion of the meeting at eight nineteen, and we're going to open up the Liquor License Authority Board. To do that, I'll need a roll call, please.
Trustee Gator? Trustee Kenny?
Present.
Trustee McDonald?
Here.
Trustee Whitehouse?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Knutson?
Here.
Mayor Hammond?
Here. Okay, item D, Liquor License Authority, special event permit application for Hoppy Go Lucky five K race. Crystal, you're doing it?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Trustees, Crystal Iker, Town Clerk. Wellington Main Streets Program has submitted their application for a special event permit to serve permanent malt beverages on March twelfth during their Hoppy Go Lucky event. The Wellington Main Streets Program has submitted all the documentation needed for that permit, including the application, the premise map, and permission for use of the premise. The Hoppy Go Lucky will take event on March twelfth from seven thirty AM to one thirty PM. And it is anticipated that two hundred individuals will attend the event. They, Soul Squared will be providing, or will be donating the alcohol and will be serving the alcohol. Leave It To Cleaver is the food truck that'll be on site, and security will be at the entrances, doing ID checks and wristbanding those over twenty-one. Be happy to answer any questions, and Ms. Cooper's here as well to answer any questions that you might have.
So I've got questions on this side, want to start with you, John?
Yes, I said a question with this, with being a five K, is the alcohol portion going to be happening after the five K, before the five? During the five K, because one of those, I have, two of those, I guess I have concerns with, one is less of an issue.
So the five K starts at nine AM, and then alcohol will not be served until after ten AM. So it'll be after the race has been completed, and.
Okay, great, thank you.
Trustee Kenny?
I love that we're having more events, so I appreciate it. Any opportunity for everybody to get together in the park, it makes my, my heart happy. So thank you guys for planning this and sponsoring this for the alcohol portion.
I'm good.
You're good.
Anything over here?
There were some issues that were, or concerns that were raised regarding the road closures, have those been resolved? They have not yet, which is why we are not approving the road closure tonight. We still are working through that with the fire department. But we have a special event permit in front of us. So the, we have obtained the road closure. There's some, we have to clarify some things on the actual map for the road closure, the traffic control plan for that fire access lane, that twenty-foot fire access lane. It's just not notated on that document, so we need to go through and have that amended.
Trustee McDonald, the special event application for the liquor portion is actually kind of a separate process. Well, it is a separate process from the actual special event permit that the town does. So that's why this is separate.
Thank you, Callie. Yeah.
Okay.
Go ahead.
All right. Yeah, I guess you're working through all those other things then, okay? I don't have anything, looking forward to seeing it. So, I might, I ran the last one, I ran and walked. I wasn't, it wasn't great, and then I got right into the water tank right after that first one. I was the first one, glad we're not doing a water tank now. Some people would like to see that, I'm sure. All right. Well, there's nothing else to say, can I get a motion to approve this? Anyone like to take it on?
I'll make a motion, we approve the special event permit application for Hoppy Go Lucky five K.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Kenny?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Whitehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Knutson?
Yes.
Mayor Hammond?
Yes, look forward to it, thank you. I got eight twenty-three, we're going to close the Liquor License Authority and resume our regular meeting. Reports, Town Attorney, anything?
No update today.
Okay, Town Administrator?
Nothing to report, thank you.
Okay, anything special from the staff that we want to hear about? Doesn't look like it. Sheriff's, they're gone. Oh, he's still here? Okay. Okay. Yes, I do, don't I? Monthly reports? No, okay. Board members, got anything you want to bring up? Start over here.
Sure. So just wanted to share, I had the opportunity to go on a ride along this last Friday with one of our deputies here in Wellington and was just impressed on many levels, just the activity that they're doing and just watching out for the community. And was able to just to watch them on several interactions with members of our community. And really the attitude that Sergeant Cherry talks about of really serving the community. I saw that. I think out of all of the people that were stopped, I think one actually received a citation. And it was a serious offense, but everyone else, you just let them know, here's some things to be careful of and watch out for. And really, you know, we've heard in the forum last night, a lot of discussion about not wanting to become a police state, right, of Ticket City. And it was great to see that that's not what we have. We really have our law enforcement who's really working with the community and really seeking to be great members and partners with us in that. So that was great. I also want to have an update. I hope to have a presentation for our first meeting in March with an update on the results of the transportation study and where we're at. Patty and I had an opportunity to meet with the two ladies from the Hispanic community who have been working closely with us on that. And we are looking at the possibility of putting a pilot program together. So I hope to have more information to present to the board in March. It's just kind of where we're at with that and what we're looking at. So.
Okay, good. Thanks.
I have a few items. The first one is the land use code is currently under underway and we are accepting public comment and welcome it from every single resident or anybody in the surrounding area for Wellington. The current draft, which is only a draft, so that's the most important part to acknowledge, is why it is a draft is because we are accepting that comment, all those comments is on the website. It's one of the major banners when you log on to Wellington, Colorado, or thetownofwellington.com is you'll see the the banners that come up and one of them is is related to the land use code. And it's all there available to you. If you have questions on how, what the land use code is, and not everybody's well versed in this, so it is very complex and long. And you want to sit down with me and walk through the document, I am happy to do that. I am in-person person and I love contributing and helping people understand these kind of items. So to help you get your feedback in and I also accept any of your feedback as well. I really want to hear from everybody about that. And there's many methods right now where you can provide that feedback currently available to everybody right now. Whether or not you're on the board, whether or not you're a member of the Planning Commission, whether or not you are just at home listening. So everybody's voice matters and we would love to hear from you. So that's the first one I wanted to mention. Also available on our website is a direct link to be able to communicate and email every member of the board at the same time. We receive those as emails and we take them very seriously and we read them. And we're also provided copies of them in addition to them available in our email. So I want to make sure that you know that you're heard. And again, there's multiple methods. So it's just two of many, but that is available to everybody. The other part I wanted to talk about is I am doing a few few fuel trips in the near future and traveling around to some of the very well-known rec centers in their surrounded communities. So what I'm really hoping to do is visit them, see how awesome they are in general, and then ask them questions about how they were funded, what was involved, what was the timeline? Who contributed? Who, who, how they went through that process? Just so I can have an understanding of best practices of some of the other communities or maybe learn from what wasn't so great in their in their cases. So we hear over and over and over again that our town wants a rec center. I want a rec center as well. But how viable is that? I don't know. And what's involved? I don't know. But I hope to know more after visiting with these communities and and talking through their process. And I'd love to share what I find out with the board and with the rest of the community, what that might look like. So now in the future, whenever, I don't know, but we'll have more information and and the the information from our surrounding community. So there's a lot of different ways that they've done it just from basic research. So I hope to get more information on that.
Nice, nice.
Yeah, I just want to give a shout out to the Main Streets Program for the new furniture and lighting. We're waiting for the streetlights and also the town staff who had to deal with some pretty silly engineering on for those things. But it's looking great. And I just finally saw the the bollards out because I'm like, oh, it's after dark and I'm out here. Okay, cool. So I just want to say it looks great and it's wonderful and it's moving in the right direction. And I think XL is not going to be part of this anymore, which is a really great thing. So thank you for all that. Appreciate it. Makes it makes it look a lot better. And was that grant fifty thousand or one fifty? For the Main Street Furniture? Am I confusing something?
The grant was for one hundred and forty-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars.
Looks great. Thank you.
Let's hug. Sure. Okay, anything? All right, well, a lot of stuff got passed tonight. We're working on a lot of things, guys, folks. We're doing our best. We're here to, we're trying to do our best for everybody, but we're not done. So believe us, we're just doing our best we can. Appreciate all coming out and the comments. I've got eight thirty. Can I get a motion adjourned in the meeting?
So move.
All in favor?
All right.